Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is now back in session. This will be a presentation from Mr. Roger Hall, Sacred Heart, and... For your permission, gentlemen, would you please allow me to pray out a prayer?
Yes, sir. Heavenly Father, we thank you today for your standing and giving mission to every one of us. We do not take it lightly. Father, we ask you to be with us today and I understand that God be with us in our discussion and help us to make prudent and wise decisions for today and every tomorrow each of you here in the thankful place of Chilhong in Jesus' name.
Good afternoon. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Father, who hath given us life, salvation, and resurrection, and has given us justice for all.
Good afternoon, Bill. I'm going to start off with public comments because we've got a time on the wall. If you're an individual, you'll get three minutes. And if you're with a group, you'll be given five minutes of one person speak for the whole group. If you hear something say it, we don't need it repeated over and over and over. And I've got a paper under my desk. I don't want to use it, but I'll use it.
Hi, Commissioner. Good afternoon to you, House of Republicans. We are here today to take, uh, to hear from Mr. Roger Hall and, and staff that's with him, uh, just some slight changes they have to their proposal. And no decisions will be made today. It's more just a chance for you guys to hear information and ask questions. Um, we also have at this table, if you see, you have the board's CEO and Chairman of the Board. At some point, they will request from the Chairman to, well, it's on the agenda, they request from the Chairman so they have a chance to ask questions themselves after the proposal, after the presentation. Okay? And we definitely just have other comments. Uh, Chairman, if you have anything else.
Okay, public comment.
I can't believe I'm the only one. I am Mary Ann McGuire. Uh, I am a permanent resident on St. George Island since 2017. I have spoken here before to the Commission and I want to reiterate a little of what I said. The last time I was here, I spoke in favor of the Sacred Heart proposal. I think it's a great proposal, what I've seen of it. I have experience with Sacred Heart. I have been going to their PT facility here for some months. We'll continue that in the future and I can't say that's good about it. Um, I've been to other PT facilities and this one is actually better. And I was skeptical at first. I thought, oh, it's going to be a small place and I'm not going to be able to do what I need, but it's been fantastic. Uh, I've also been over to have a test at the hospital in St. Joe and that was all just done with, you know, grace and efficiency. The people that I have interacted with, um, at Sacred Heart have all been, um, very efficient, very friendly, and very caring. Uh, I have not been to Weems for any reason. My husband did go there once and said it was just fine. I assume that the staff at Weems is equally caring and efficient and friendly. What I would like to ask, I have a question, um, and it is, if the Sacred Heart proposal is accepted and we do, uh, build a facility here and Sacred Heart comes, uh, are they planning to give priority hiring to the staff of Weems if Weems is to shut down? This is my question and I hope it will be answered today. Uh, I really feel for anybody at Weems that's worried about their job and, um, would like to hear whether that's taken into consideration in the Sacred Heart proposal. Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Dave Watts. I'm a resident of Franklin County, having a home on both the island and in Appalachia Cola. I have sent you all an email a few weeks ago and I'd like you to just read that email to refresh your memories of it. My wife and I are both eighty-two years of age this year and we are blessed with good health. However, we are very concerned about the future of healthcare services for ourselves, for our family who visit us, and purely for all the residents. At our age, we know how fragile health can be. I had experience with hospital boards, having served on the board of a community hospital while I was still actively working. This hospital was undergoing a large expansion and because of my construction business background, I was asked to facilitate issues between the contractor and the hospital management. Having seen the complexity of specifications and inspections for building bridges, I thought I could help. I was overwhelmed with the complexities which both the contractor and the hospital were facing in order to pass the rigid state and federal requirements. That experience has me greatly concerned about the proposed new facility that is being considered for Weems. Sacred Heart has demonstrated their commitment to our area through their placement of an award-winning hospital in Port St. Joe and with the clinic and physical therapy services operating in Appalachia Cola. We and our family have utilized the services of both the hospital and clinic and have high praise for the professionalism, friendliness, and responsiveness of their staffs. To consider any new Weems facility is to put good money after bad. We recognize that many long-term residents have an emotional attachment to Weems, but those experiences are a long ago. And in the last decade, Weems has been nothing more than a, not a well-done emergency room, although they help people certainly in need. And I won't comment on the wonderful staff that's there. They're doing their job well. Today's climate of medical care is highly complex and becoming even more so. No consultant is going to change the direction of the downward spiraling of our healthcare services if the Weems project is allowed to go forward. Please review the Sacred Heart proposal with great seriousness and I hope you can negotiate a fair contract with them. That fine organization is ready to deliver a project with cost certain and day certain. It is ready to deliver healthcare services that will meet the needs of our county. As county commissioners, you have choices and decisions to make which will form the legacy of your service. With a selection of Sacred Heart's proposals, you have a wonderful opportunity to make the right decision. Thank you for your service.
Hello, Commissioner. I'm Tom Morgan from Appalachia Cola. Um, my wife and I own Appalachia Outfitters. We employ six people from Franklin County, one in Carabelle, one from the island, and four from Appalachia Cola. And I wanted to chat a bit about my opinion on the Sacred Heart versus TMH proposals. One is location. Where should it be located? I am not getting into that. Number two, healthcare in rural America has changed since the 1950s. And healthcare today in rural America is have an emergency facility to receive people and then send them out where the best specialists are. And that is what healthcare in rural America is today. In the 1950s, if we had a heart attack, we would be treated in Weems. That's not what happens today. Number three, the Critical Access Hospital Certificate. Boy, I've heard all sorts of things about it. I've done a lot of research and studying on it. I asked David Walker what it meant to, um, Weems last year, last fiscal year, and I think it was $225,000. Weems had revenues of 12 million. So that certificate only represents 2% of the revenues. I don't want to call that immaterial, but that is not the big issue in front of you, in my opinion. Number four, financial. We have heard that Weems has turned the corner. And I think you've heard that the financial accounting in the last fiscal year had two changes in accounting. One was this board forgave debt. That was nearly $700,000. The second one was they changed the bad debt reserve percentage. That was about $300,000. If you take that million dollars and look at the financials, Weems has not turned the corner. They have not turned the corner. And when the auditors audit Weems for this year, they'll call those things extraordinary items. They will not be part of the ordinary income of that facility. And then it comes to the deals at the end of the day. And let me say this. If this board chooses to build a new hospital, there will be more employees. We all know that. There will be. How many is up for debate, and I'm not here to debate it today. But it certainly isn't the high number that I've been hearing. I'm certain of that. The two proposals, TMH and Alliant, are asking for a $30,000 a month consulting fee, plus we would pay a CEO $10,000 a month. That's $470,000 a year for consulting and a CEO. We have had seven CEOs in the 10 years that I have been.
Time, sir.
Thank you. The capital's very different. The risks, the county would stay in the hospital business if you all chose TMH. Thank you very much. It's a shame I couldn't finish.
Good afternoon. My name is Susan Lee, Chairman, Resident of the County. I'm here for my husband and I today to state that we feel an assumption is being made towards us and we want to be perfectly clear on this. Just because we supported something 17 or so years ago does not mean that we currently support it. Times change. That's why, for instance, we have elections. We may one time vote for one candidate and another time somebody else. And I certainly am not suggesting any kind of voting be done. I'm just saying, please don't assume that what we believed in, supported years ago, we still, still do. Um, I can, as a private individual, I can't identify anything that TMH has done for me. What I do know is that Sacred Heart provides two medical providers in a medical office here for us. What I also know is that Sacred Heart provides physical therapy and occupational therapy, both of which my husband and I have had need for. Another matter I wanted to say is I hear the transportation area and I feel that every time we talk about it, it's just one segment of our county. My husband and I are blessed. We have one car. It's very old. I know people do not have cars. But our car breaks down or my husband, um, his primary care provider is the VA. So he might have had an appointment with the VA and he had to have the car and I needed to get to Appalachia for my therapy treatments. Transportation is a desperate problem for everyone in this community. So I just ask that, think about from the common citizen, these factors when you make your decisions, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Before I can begin, I just wanted to let you know that Joe Hambro is a longtime planning and zoning member, is in critical condition with a broken neck and in the hospital. I won't use more of my time for that, but a good friend to all of us. Everyone wants good healthcare. How many of you are willing to put aside your political justifications for the sake of the health of the citizenry you were sworn to protect? Today, we can't see it. Let's do a little side-by-side comparison. Weems promised a 31,000-square-foot full-service hospital. The bait and switch is an addition and remodel to the existing emergency room with beds. Missing 13 essential hospital services currently, no different from the future proposal. Sacred Heart is a full-service hospital and the freestanding emergency room will deliver more than Weems does today. Carabelle was promised a 24/7 urgent care facility staffed by doctors. It still doesn't have that. Weems financials. Weems is perpetually on financial life support. With over 2 million in direct county and state support each year, Weems is financially fragile, with it being no exaggeration to say, any day could be its last. Contrast that with Sacred Heart being known by Ascension Healthcare, the largest and strongest not-for-profit healthcare service in the United States. We attack spending, nepotism, public utterances that are clearly false, and the financial and legal liability that Weems presents to the county and its citizens. We do not attack its role as a very basic emergency room with very underutilized beds. Sacred Heart is that full-service hospital promised so very long ago and coupled with a needed centrally-located healthcare facility and emergency room accessible to all and not just a few. Weems needs every dollar it can get just to keep the status quo. A new hospital will be more expensive to operate and will likely bring in just about the same revenue as now. Sacred Heart has no such problem and in fact, only wants $500,000 of the 2.3 million generated by the Healthcare Trust Fund. This leaves 1.7 million available for other vital services needed around the county, including mental health, dentistry, deductible and co-pay support, transportation, and much more. Critical care access, nothing is as misunderstood. The other day, you heard from the faith-based community who totally were misled by someone that critical care access has something to do with better critical medical care. Critical care access is only a monetary plus-up of a couple hundred thousand dollars a year for Medicare and Medicaid patients and conveys no promise of good care. When and if Weems decides to commence construction, the CCA designation will be up for review and as my understanding, that Sacred Heart may decide to ask for it. Where would that leave Weems? The deep state is not just in Washington, gentlemen. It exists right here in Franklin County with local interests pushing their noses into the trough. No one wants to feel their job is threatened. We understand that, but healthcare is about who is getting the best care and the quickest response in an emergency. Weems has proven over the years that it is not the best place to go for a critical emergency. It has no prospect of lifting itself to compete with Sacred Heart and protestations of those on this board that say, "We promised people," ring hollow because they are, what they propose is not what was promised and their own political interest had trumped the obvious. Sacred Heart is a large territory, hospital system with every service a person could need, the right personnel, ongoing training, and the ability to save lives in that first critical hour that Weems simply can't. We owe it to the people to do what's right. This is not about you, Commissioners. It's about the rest of us constituents and the visitors to Franklin County who, life or death, may one day be called a pound tom. Make the right call. Thank you, Commissioners.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Excuse me. My name is Brian Robinson. I own a home on St. George Island. I've spoken to you in the past on several occasions as a hospital expert, a subject matter expert, an individual who's written a book on the subject. Today, I'm here as a citizen. In the years that we've been here in Franklin County, I've heard the Commission discuss and articulate interlocal agreements. I've heard you discuss and debate the subject of jobs and the jobs that would be eliminated. I've heard you discuss the fact that employees need benefits. I've heard you discuss any number of things, but I've never heard the Commission's vision for healthcare delivery for Franklin County. I've never heard the Commission's vision for improving access to not only physical access, but clinical capacity. I've never heard the vision of the Commission with regard to improving technology. So I say to you today, I'm going to step back and say that Weems is a patient lying in a bed. Here's the analogy. Our patient named Weems is hemorrhaging. In this case, hemorrhaging money. And like with a human being, eventually, there won't be enough blood to sustain life. And there's not necessarily enough money today and certainly won't be tomorrow to sustain the life of Weems. The patient is hemorrhaging. Life as we know it cannot be sustained. Weems is a patient on a ventilator. The ironic part is, Weems does not have the clinical capacity to provide ventilator care for the residents of Franklin County. I ask that we move past indecision and begin to get to a vision of improving access and clinical quality for the same people that are today paying the bill as we pump more money into Weems with no hope of sustaining life. Thank you.
Other comment?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Name's Brenda Carlin. My husband and I live on St. George Island. I've been here before. I've sent you emails about the subject. I've participated in the meetings. My only question that I have at this point, because from the comments made earlier, we are hearing the same information and so are you, over and over again, about the state of Weems, about what the community wants and what we would like to do for the future. And that is have, what I'm hearing, Sacred Heart Ascension take over and bring their services here. But my question for the Commission, and I don't have a good answer, even though I've asked you directly, particularly, Sir Chairman Lockley, what is, after all the financials have been presented and all the public commentary and all the studies, what is it that is your sole or two reasons for not looking at that and still being at this point where we're trying to decide? The only answer that I've heard, quite honestly, is, we want to fulfill a promise that was made back 11 years ago. I honestly don't feel that there's anything more that we can say as citizens to convince you or change your mind or whoever else. I just have not heard, to the community at large, why it is so important, so a priority, so significant to ignore the financials, to ignore the public will, and stand on possibly putting the county in debt for, what, 25 years or something, 45 million? I forget the numbers. Alan has stood up here and repeatedly shared the numbers. So if someone, if you, sir, could explain to the community why it is that no other option, even though we've looked at the options and you've allowed the options to be presented, why no other option is viable except getting into debt and trying to revive Weems and trying to make a new hospital through Weems? And that's what I would ask. Thank you very much.
Other comments? Other comment?
Could help yourself. My name is Donna Butterfield. I live in Franklin County. I pay taxes in Franklin County and I vote in Franklin County. And I urge you, Commissioner Lockley, I got you, accept Ascension Sacred Heart for the betterment of Franklin County.
Other comment? Other comment? Other comment? Okay, next we have Mr. Roger Hall. By the way, I voted for him.
Good afternoon. Franklin Patty, sir, is a wonderful, wonderful person. Hey, with me, Patty, she's a consultant that we have. She's a healthcare expert. She worked with many hospitals. She works with Ascension. She's knowledgeable of how healthcare is changing and how we can reconfigure healthcare that would be economically sustainable so that we're happy. Also have Robin Goodman. She's our Vice President of Nursing Care and really is our operating officer at Quan Hospital in, in Port St. Joe, does an exceptional job. I'd like to start off first that, you know, Ascension Sacred Heart, we're a faith-based ministry. If you, if you look before us, our mission statement, and I won't go through all of it, but if you, if you go through the middle of it, it's Catholic healthcare ministry dedicated to spiritually-centered holistic care that sustains and improves health cares for individuals and communities. And we've proved in that. When, when, when healthcare started, or thought as a charity started, it was four years ago in France, and in 1915, came, came to Pensacola. And they were invited by the community, the business leaders, put together money and started one of the first nursing schools in the Panhandle of Florida. In 2003, they, they were invited to the Emerald Coast down in Destin, the community welcomed Sacred Heart at the time, before it was Ascension, and helped raise for a $58 million facility, raised $20 million for that facility, community. Since then, I'll come back. I'm not following my slides. Excuse me. I had, I had cataract surgery and I don't know whether I see better with my glasses or without. I'm not, I don't have glasses, so yeah, excuse me. But, but the point is that, that we've, we've continued to grow our ministry by working with the community and the business leaders and we've raised the money in Destin and we've now raised nearly $90 million for a healthcare facility in Destin, consistently growing that hospital every year now for 17 years. And Port St. Joe was about a $28 million facility and we raised $10 million. But back to the slide on the size of Ascension is, is over 150 hospitals. We provided $3.4 million worth of, 3.4 million emergency visits. We provided $2 billion worth of non-aidal care. So we understand the reconfiguration of healthcare. The way we operate hospitals in Pensacola has changed. The way we've operated hospitals, because Ascension runs about 12 different Critical Access Hospitals and Rural Hospitals, so we, we have the resources to be able to look at how we operate hospitals, how we reconfigure it out of healthcare, how we make it better because our, our whole purpose is how we improve access and quality of healthcare. Good luck. There we go. One more. I can see my eyesight has impacted my ability to get right, but... Okay. Here we go. There we go. So if you look at the, at our services across, across Sacred Heart, across the Panhandle, has grown. We, we're happy to have our hospital in, in Port St. Joe. We've heard of several of the citizens here in Franklin County that have had services in our Port St. Joe hospital.
Waiting until a new building was built. Because again, they're employed by us. So we are shifting them over to this county one day a week can be done more rapidly than trying to recruit a new physician to a market because they're employed by us. Again, and we would incorporate telemedicine for access to other physician specialists as part of our platform, whether it's behavioral health because of some mental health concerns or any other type of physician specialist, we can incorporate that. And then in the future, other specialties to be determined. So the biggest change you'll see here that we identified on this slide, in addition to the physicians and their support staff, we would expect also to have the mammography tech and an assistant as well as the telemedicine physicians. We've already talked about rehab and of course, we're here, we're looking at having, expanding the rehab services we currently provide from 2,000 to 4,000 square feet. So having more equipment and more services available for the population. And that also would be located at this new ambulatory pavilion where you designated. One of the other items that had come up with since we began meeting with you all was what do we do about swing beds? Well, swing beds by their very nature means you need a licensed hospital inpatient bed to swing. So a swing bed really is a short-term skilled nursing rehab bed. And we have already entered into discussions, Ascension has started having discussions with the St. James Rehabilitation and Nursing Center here in the county. It's the only nursing home in the county. They currently have about an 83% occupancy, so they have available beds. And we're talking about, and they are a five-star facility, which is excellent. And they've already invested the capital in their building and they have an infrastructure. So they have the ability to provide skilled nursing services on a short-term basis post-hospitalization if a patient needs it. So we've already started at Robbins, been meeting with them. We've already started talking with them about how Ascension rehab services can maybe facilitate or enhance what they're doing to meet short-term skilled nursing rehab needs of the population in the community. This is a rendering of another emergency room, freestanding emergency room, but essentially what we would be talking about is one building, and we'll get into the square footage in a moment, that has an emergency room, has a primary care practice, 4,000 square feet of rehabilitation space and a specialty care practice. Couple of things to point out. What does this proposal have? And I will say that this list of services, we have your ACA, the Agency of Healthcare Administration, report on the hospital. So from that, we extracted information. The most recent they have available is 2018, so if anything's changed in the last year, I don't have that yet. But again, what we're talking about, the first column is the current services at the existing locations. And here's planned services with the Ascension relationship. Well, they both have an emergency room. But the Ascension proposal has 24/7 emergency room physicians. So that would be an enhancement to services provided locally. With the 24/7 emergency room physicians, we have the capability of doing emergency room procedures 24/7. We'll have x-ray and CAT scan, we'll have a new CAT scan machine, so we won't have to worry about breakage or having to be on diversion without a CT. And so we'll have x-ray, CT, we'll have ultrasound 24/7. You already have respiratory therapy, we would continue to have that. The difference here is you currently have inpatient beds with essentially an average daily census of one. We would not have licensed inpatient beds. But we would have observation beds, and as I just mentioned, we expanded those from two beds to six beds. We would not have swing beds, as you can see is yes, now here's the no. But the difference is, we, as I said, we're going to work with St. James to help enhance their capability so that perhaps if there was a swing bed need or a short-term skilled nursing bed need, we could be working with St. James for that need. And Ascension's air flight service, which we are proposing to incorporate at the emergency room. Here's more comparison. Now, this is called the clinic service comparison, the last page was the hospital services. Now here's the clinic services. We would have a primary care physician in the West Clinic, I'm going to refer to it as West, the one here in Apalachicola, that would be the Dr. Wells adding that physician to the practice. The nurse practitioners in the West Clinic would still remain, it would still be open five days. The nurse practitioners in the East Clinic would remain and it would still be open five and a half days. Now what else, but what enhancements do we have? We've got the cardiology service, you don't have that now, we will have that. Orthopedic service, we will have. General surgery service, we will have. You do have an echocardiography service at the hospital currently, we would continue to have that. And then in the private physician office, we would continue to have EKG, ultrasound, mammography, specialist procedures, because our specialists that come here can do procedures in their office. And then we would have the rehab services, the physical therapy occupational and speech. The jobs with the Ascension proposal, and these aren't all new jobs. As you can see, the mid-level providers are the nurse practitioners you already have employed. So that's that line. And the nurses and other staff, there are other staff, I'll show you in a moment, that may currently work in the emergency room, that will also work, or in radiology that would then be hired and interviewed. So we have staff, existing staff. The key addition here, of course, are the physicians that are all incremental. And then some of these staff members could be new people or they could be people that are currently working at Weems. These numbers do not include any physicians via telemedicine or any hospital-based like radiology, pathology, air flight personnel, relationship with St. James and any other future recruitments. These are based on, these physicians are based on those that are currently employed by Ascension. I do want to point this out because I think there's also a misconception regarding the current Weems FTEs. And this is the number, we got this from your 2018 cost report, and it shows that there are 93 full-time equivalents at Weems. But that includes 26 people in the ambulance, the EMS service. So without that 26, there's actually nine in the clinics and a 58 at the hospital. And I had confirmed that with David to make sure, because I was actually surprised that the 93 did include the ambulance, but David Walker did confirm that to us. So with the new proposal, what do we have? And you can see there's less FTEs overall, there's 69. So there's about 23 less employees. But when we start looking at what category, because we assumed EMS will not change, that'll still be a county function. And then we have the clinic FTEs, because now we've added some physicians and a few more staff in the clinic. So the clinic would expand, the emergency room also expands. Radiology and respiratory are similar. Our lab is via telehealth and then electrocardiography is in our physician office. And then we have our environmental services. So the majority of, and then we had physician FTEs and rehab services. So the majority of what really is being eliminated is the dietary, the planned operations and then what appears to be eliminated, I should say, because some of these functions, accounting, medical records, we will have in these other locations, but they're not called that by department. So really what we have is a shift of about 23 people. And this is only year one. As volume increases and recruitment increases, we would anticipate to increase those numbers. We also, of course, have our facilities in the next county and they obviously hire a number of these people in these specialties as well. So there would be opportunity to move into another Ascension location. We don't have to go into a lot of detail here, but what we're talking about is the 20,900 square foot project. It has increased, the emergency room got larger because we increased up to six observation beds, six holding beds there. And then the specialty area got bigger by 400 square feet for mammography. The other square footage you would have seen previously. So as a result, we adjusted the numbers. Our capital cost construction related is a little over $8 million. The equipment cost is about 3.6 million, and that's because we've added, obviously, state-of-the-art digital mammography. And that was a big jump in numbers in the specialty care practice. So we've got our budget, so we, we're not, these numbers were studied and put together pretty comprehensively in terms of what our capital requirements would be for the new proposal. Operationally, this is what our operations look like. You see the same 43 FTEs spread across the five departments, if you will. The four that would be at the new building, your emergency room and diagnostics, primary care, specialty and rehab. And then we have the Carabel Clinic. And this is what is forecasted. Now this, and you may recall this from earlier, the salaries for the employed physicians in the specialty care practice as well as our mammography tech are actually not included in here as an expense because they're already employed. And so we just have the cost of providing this service here. But you can see in the first year of operations, Ascension anticipates that it would have a $1.4 million loss and they would cover that. And that'll be, we'll get into that in a moment. In the second year, as volume increases, it's about a million dollar loss. But again, we've got the same five departments. And that is part of the operating commitment. So let's summarize what the proposal is. First, Ascension's going to provide the capital through the equipment-related costs. So that was that 3.6 million. It will develop, license and operate newly constructed facilities. And Ascension has a lot of experience doing that. They have a number of freestanding emergency rooms as well as comprehensive ambulatory pavilions under construction. And once a site is identified and process starts, it can be done in about 10 months. The primary care physician practice, we can start and establish as soon as practical. We don't have to go out and recruit somebody and wait a year till they graduate and might be able to relocate here. Dr. Wells already lives in the county and is ready to start as soon as we can work out a relationship. The specialists similarly can start as soon as we can work out a relationship subject to space availability. We will stop, staff and operate the Carabel Clinic. We'll double the size of our existing rehab space. We'll work with the local nursing home, which is the St. James home, to enhance rehab services locally. And we will make available annual reports and recommendations to the commissioners for needed community services, whether it be transportation or mental health or psychiatry in terms of what services the commission may want as we identify them through the practices.
Can I make a question?
Sure.
That building on Coquelin Avenue, y'all want to take for that?
No, so I'm about to get, the county would pay the 8 million for the building. They would pay the 8 million for the building is what we're proposing. And then we would lease it from the county at a nominal rate. So you would, the county would provide the capital, that's exactly where I was going, Mr. Lockley. The county provides the capital for the construction-related costs, so that's right about 8 million. The difference to the 12 million, it would be Ascension providing that. The county would enter into a long-term building lease with Ascension at a nominal rate. Of course, services at Weems Memorial would be replaced by this new building and the new hospital services being established. The county would continue to collect their one cent sales tax. Out of that, it would provide Ascension with a half million dollar annual payment to compensate for the charity care that we will be providing. And then you would determine, and I heard, I think I heard someone today say it's about 2.3 million that's collected. So you would have about 1.8 million left to provide for other services in the county as the commissioners would deem appropriate, whether it be transportation, mental health services, helping people with co-pays or deductibles, or some of the ideas that I heard about earlier. Now again, let me go over here, I have another side-by-side. What happens today? This is the current situation. Today, the county provides the funds for the operational loss. Under the Ascension relationship, they would not. Ascension would provide all the funds for the operational loss. Today, the hospital funding by the county annually is 2 million plus or 2.3 million, but technically unlimited, whether payroll can't be met, the county provides subsidies. It would be limited to a half million dollar charity payment to Ascension. County surplus today for other health initiatives doesn't really happen. In the future, you would have the remainder of the one cent sales tax, so about 1.8 million for other health initiatives. In 2018, you, the county actually had 683,000 charity care at Weems, that was from the ACA cost report. And we're saying that'll actually get limited to 500,000, which would be part of the one cent sales tax. The county covers any payroll gaps today, it won't in the future. The county today has to pay for equipment purchases and replacement, it won't in the future. Ascension will pay for all equipment and any upgrades and replacements. The county today has operational risk. It will not in the future. Ascension will have the operational risk. Today, Ascension has no operational risk in the county except for its physician and rehab. It will take, absorb all that risk in the future and it will provide funds for operational loss. So the year one operating proposal has a million four in loss that Ascension would cover and year two with little over a million. The county investment in the new healthcare facility would be the 8 million dollars that we just, that you just asked about, Chairman. And the Ascension investment in the new healthcare facility would be about 3.6 million, which includes the equipment. And so that's the summation of the proposal. And we hope you can easily visually see why we believe this is an advantage to the community. It will meet the future needs of the community on a healthcare basis because it will have the front door of a hospital right here in town. It's just a hospital without beds. And if we look at it like that in today's healthcare environment, that can meet the needs of the population, of the local residents. And when the transfer is needed, we have the EMS service or the air flight service so we can move them rapidly.
So I think you can see our intent is comprehensive. We want to make a difference to Franklin County. And so, open up both questions.
Great presentation as well. Just a point of fact, I'm sure, page it on the caution board, that was for 2018, 2018.
That's correct.
And so numbers probably change a little here and there.
They could have, and I asked the state for it, it hasn't Friday, they still didn't have it, so I guess it's not there.
I understand that, that change. Also, it was mentioned on one of the slides that we don't have a 24-hour physician in nurse rooms, we do. Okay. So I just want to just make sure that you verify that.
Thank you.
And we also have care for that as well. Now EMS, emergency medical services, that's something that Weems currently provide. Under your proposal, that service will go back to the county?
That's correct.
Okay. And there, and there has been a lot of talk about critical access designation, you know. So can you tell us the value of that? Do you think there's a value for a small rural hospital to have that designation?
They have critical access, yes, we think so. Understanding critical access provides you 101% of your cost of Medicare and Medicaid allowed costs, it's not, not all the costs. So the more volume we have, the more value you have. But then, of course, when you look at Weems cost report, that's 40% of Weems' costs of Medicare and Medicaid. So you get 1% of that, so it has value, it would have some value to us.
Yeah, yeah, so it will definitely have some value, say.
If, when Weems decertifies their beds and if we're able to get critical access designation, it'd have value to us.
Okay, and you would go after that, I'm just saying.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, that's just true.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. I'm glad you mentioned the, you know, the workforce analysis, I think that was good, you know, because we definitely need to look at those particularly.
And we will, we will give every employee the priority on hiring. We have the qualifications, obviously, they have to do that. But it's not our intention in this place even. We want to displace as little as possible. But we want to create a sustainable model because when we create that sustainable model, we know that we will be able to grow, to hire more people long-term. So we really think in five years, we'll have more than the employees that we have now. We see that, I think, being different jobs because we will constantly reconfigure healthcare, we constantly look at what the needs are in the county and work with the county when you have the million and a half difference that, you know, that's the county. We will work in consultation with the county, how do we best use it? So every dollar we can put on the table, every dollar we can ensure that goes to how we provide healthcare the best, how we make a difference.
And I know, from one of our previous conversations, you mentioned that, I think in Washington DC, you all did something like that, you closed the hospital down until freestanding. You know, what was the success of that? I mean, from the community point of view, was the success from the community point of view?
You know, as we all know, any time you close a hospital, that's not deemed a success. But when we, when we go back, we look at the job that we've done, we've added more primary care, we've added a more telemedicine platform and we're really making a difference on how we can take the most poor and vulnerable and give them access and give them the care. And we're, we're still there. Other hospitals are there, they'd be able to take care of that. So we feel really, we've improved the access and we've added more providers. So we feel we've done a good job here in Washington.
The community can praise that, I believe.
You have this community.
Okay, okay. Good call.
Good to see you.
You too. Critical access in the cost report.
Yes, sir.
If we build a facility, 8 billion, 8 million dollars account, would we be able to write the depreciation off on our cost report?
No, that, that, that 8 million would be a total expense back to the.
Cost, cost report would go what?
Correct.
You mentioned, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, I'm bad on names.
I'm bad.
You mentioned that you would pay a nominal rent. Was that talking about law or is that just something negotiated?
Just would be negotiated.
Well, the state said you had to pay for Fairmark, but that isn't a county problem.
Well, we're, we're saying that, that we would.
I was about to say.
Oh, that's a good question. Our intention is a nominal rate. Because when we, when we look at operation, we know that the operation is going to be losing money for a number of years until we're able to get, get the volume.
Equipment that y'all put in Weems, won't be, no longer in Weems, I'm assuming, is Sacred Heart Emergency Care.
We haven't determined what that name is, we're, we don't have to brand everything.
The equipment that you are going to be placing in this new facility, is this all new equipment or is this equipment that you brought in from other areas?
Brand new.
All brand new?
All brand new equipment. It'll be sale, I think. One thing I mentioned is that all the equipment will be, will be digital. The equipment, you know, we have, we have our radiologists that be doing the equipment, so we have very, and so, and also there's reimbursement that you get from having digital from Medicare.
But that would go to the cost report?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, yeah.
That's correct.
You mentioned the health pad.
Yes, sir.
The new health pad, I don't know if you'll tell me what we got now. How we have to.
Just depending on location, where we put it, we would manage and make sure that it meant the FAA standard, which is why I'm sure yours does too. But it's important for us when we have the, have the hospital.
They don't use what we have right here in Weems. Or the Carabel Clinic.
We're going to look at how we can provide the best service and where that needs to be.
Going back to EMS, because EMS is a, was a very integral part of our system here.
Oh, absolutely.
So if there are any considerations that you all take EMS and manage that for the county, I'll.
You know, Dave, we can, we can look at that. You know, transportation, healthcare is very important, so we, we have looked at that to look at how that would include in the proposal. You know, healthcare is changing, when we start looking at the freestanding emergency departments all across North Florida, we're looking at transportation. We don't have an answer today, but we certainly will be looking at it because our whole intent is to make access better and transportation is part of that.
EMS will be a transport that we stand in, EB as well, sure. Just like any other emergency room, they'll be able to transfer that. Yeah, and so the other thing that I think just probably answers that, this question for anybody in the community, if Sacred Heart pull out 10 years from now, whatever building, will, no equipment, right?
Correct.
Equipment will belong to you all.
We, hypothetically, we're not going to walk.
Okay, I think people need to hear that.
Yeah, that's, that's true. But then equipment will be in your own, too.
Be due with due.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
One, one other, one more thing.
Yes, sir.
If we, that's where it's the front of 8 million dollar construction cost, right in your write-off? Would that pretty much mean that building the freestanding facility could possibly cost us more money than it would be built off with the depreciation write-off?
You still going to have the, have the operating cost of, whatever that, that cost would be, you know, I think you have to look at the cash dollars and that the county would be depreciating, that the building, I'm not sure if the building would be depreciated, but still cost, so. So when you asked a question on depreciation, I interpreted it as reversible depreciation. It was still being, the only thing you're doing is you're recognizing that 8 million dollars over to the depreciated life that you have. And this would be the same way as a hospital or a freestanding emergency.
Would we get money back from the government or the cost?
You would get the depreciated cost, you would only get 40% of, or the percent of Medicare and Medicaid. Wouldn't be 100% of that, so, you know, it'd be, be a bill over 40 years.
And just great line, talk is to fix and retire.
Great line, it's correct.
What, what do you have, who's going to be building your road?
We're going through that process, but let me, let me say this, you know.
That's a question, I have a, you know, I like you, but I might not like the next man to handle it.
Well, I really, I really like you. Listen, I hate, I hate you asking this question in public record because retirement is not.
This y'all fired later.
Well, I'm going to be joining, but let me say, let me say this, go from Franklin County, it's very important to me. So I can, I can promise you, you say yes to Sacred Heart, you know, I'll, I'll come work for you as a free consultant, okay? for you as a free consultant, okay? I want my career making difference, and this is important. You know, the question is except about retirement.
I'll ask a question. Okay. How long does Sacred Heart say they keep on losing money?
We're. Straight up, we, you know, we're not going to walk away from you. We're not going to come here, say we're going to reconfigure and we, we're the geniuses that got all the answers and we're going to help you and then if it doesn't work out well. Now, we're going to be smart and look at how we configure things and how we work on things, but we're not going to be Franklin County. We're here right today. We have no intention, that's not who we are, that's not who our mission is.
I mean, I ain't nobody leaving, but I cannot nobody leaving a building.
We're, I think you can ask anybody, we've been partners, but we've stood behind what we said we've brought. And I think that's a great question. I'd ask the same question.
I guess we'll be in a, I guess we'll be as a thirty years, thirty, forty years business, for hands back, will y'all be a thirty, thirty, forty years business time?
Yes.
That's all the video?
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I.
You can't.
You, y'all said you want two physicians.
To start off with.
Well, but that's two right now we talk. Well, but neither one of those two would spend any time in Carabelle at all.
We're looking at, we're rotating, you know, we want to make.
I mean, this is, right now, one of my primary concerns is that we have second level care. They do a great job in Carabelle, our VA or physicians, but I would like to have a doctor in Carabelle.
I think that's a great, great.
Second level care is not what you have here. You have the best that you.
We would, we would have doctors overseeing.
Well, that's what we do now.
And, you know, we have doctors, so I can't commit to yesterday, but I can commit we'll rotate and a doctor will have some presence in Carabelle.
We took our time when we, listening to, I had time for the public to listen to our school over in the committee without any disruption, y'all will. Um, I got another question. That's eight million dollars. You're saying you, we don't have LPN Sacred Heart?
A few, not many.
I know, I know, they're not going to go. So, they'll be out of there. So, really, your doctor's coming with you, right?
Correct.
Your doctor, you gotta be out of there. What about your, people do your paperwork, writing down with.
Most of that's centralized. We have some clerical functions in the clinics, you know, for registration, but when you start looking at the billing and collection that's done, you know, from a central location.
So, really, what you'll be hiring is a low level, put people in, somebody to clean up.
Bring a very expensive doctor with us.
I mean, you bring the doctor with you.
Oh, you're talking about hiring? You know, we'll make preference of hiring the people that already have a job in here in the clinic, but I think.
I was just going to point out, right now, you have nine clinic employees and we're looking at fifteen, so there'll be more RNs, and I think you asked a question about LPNs. I mean, the majority of ours are RNs or nurses aides, but we do have some LPN physicians, but the majority are RNs. So, we see the professional staff in the clinic getting larger, the professional staff in the emergency room getting larger, radiology and respiratory are similar. And so, you're correct, it's the overhead departments, if you will, that where the turnover is going to be largely based out of. But, the employee base and the salary base is higher in what we have. And we've anticipated hiring your people in the clinic. I think we've had a slide that showed the mid-level providers are your existing employees. And then some of the staff here in the emergency room, as well as in the partner care practice and the Carabelle clinic already exists. We just would expand it because we were adding physicians, so the additional nurses.
Well, nothing you can't do is a hospital.
You know, you could do anything, but we won't build a hospital because it would continue losing money. We will, we can build the emergency department and bring the doctors, but when you start building a hospital, just the support staff on, would you have to build the clinic to have all the, to meet the construction standards, to add the other services, just economically, doesn't work. And it's no different, you know, there's over a hundred rural hospitals that closed over the last two, three years. They're projecting that many on a go-forward basis. American Hospital Socia, keeping that with a statistic, there's nearly fifteen hundred rural hospitals right now that are losing money, that are trying to figure out what we're trying to figure out today.
Well, you can't, who might have phoned up and thanked you and let them do the, what you're doing?
That's not going to make sense for us. You know, if you ask that question, we've got investment in that community.
Well, see, we, that's what I'm saying. I have to get to the school, urgent announcement, it's not making sense to y'all, it's not making sense for us. We doing, I'm doing the wheel of people, I'm not doing the wheel of thirty-five, forty people, I'm certainly not.
You're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order. I'm not out of order, you out of order. I'm not doing the wheel of thirty-five, forty people, I vote nowhere, still want to know who want to have it waived. The thing is at seventy percent, who said yes? That's about thirty-five, forty people right there. I can't listen to that. That's just my.
Resign.
That's the board.
I got a comment, Mr. Chairman. One comment I have was exactly what Commissioner Lockley asked about us making a commitment on thirty-year, if we build a building, it's going to take thirty years to pay for it or you're going to be there. I heard you committed to that.
Yes, sir.
My next question is, I like for the commissioner, a question that we get a copy of this PowerPoint. So that we can go back and look over it, you know.
Sure.
We don't have anything right now.
Oh, it's leaving a lot of things for us to teach.
Okay.
I like for you get the staff and get the information to Mr. Maron here where he can get it to the commissioner where we can review this at some point.
Sure.
Other than that, I pretty much, I'm going to leave the company today, so.
You know, we'll give.
How do you, I can go back and refer to.
Absolutely, and use that and Patty and Rob and I are always open for your questions as you go through that, so feel free to give some comments.
We have about twelve hundred CHP members in the county. How we all address that?
We accept capital health in all our clinics.
Is Sacred Heart, the hospital in St. Joe, able to accept Sacred Heart, I mean, capital health insurance?
We're able to accept them, they won't approve them going there, but.
And it's out of what it called, out of network?
Mm-hmm.
Is that a bigger expense for the patient?
Won't be. They don't go there now. We'll continue to send the patients where capital health care wants them, and that's going to be the patient's choice. They got the insurance with the understanding that capital health will direct them and we will certainly help that patient go there because we won't put that patient in, they have greater financial responsibility, will direct them.
So, you'll have some kind of relationship with TMA, that last agreement?
Absolutely.
You're Franklin County.
We have that relationship with St. Joe, yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Now, as far as for your emergency transport with your airlift, is that the same where you will actually transport to, you know, any facilities, not strictly sacred, other sacred hearts?
We do that today.
Okay.
The patient makes the request, not where they request. Not all health care providers are that way, but I'm happy to be part of Ascension Sacred Heartness.
Capital Health Plan also is part of our benefit, they actually cover air flight service.
We understand.
Okay.
What happened, the patient, they're out of, and they try to, tooth taken off.
We're going to, Commissioner, we'll make sure that they go on capital health. Capital health, what happens in insurance is they have to prove the care and they have to make sure that their care meets medical necessity and they give the authorization where that patient, and we'll honor that authorization to get them where that insurance plan goes. We do that all across the county and the board.
Yeah, I didn't know that. I just, you know, first to come out there and came with four and got to be transferred, got capital health.
You. Just, we had a patient in our emergency room that had to be transported to the hospital. It's a capital health patient. TMA said, we don't have any beds. Our last reason says, we don't have any beds. The only bed available is in St. Joe or Pineapple City. A side of network.
In those cases, the HMO will allow the patient to go, there's no other services to go to an out-of-network hospital.
And that patient is treated just like, as in that work.
Absolutely.
Of my way.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Hall, you have the days on the clinic in Carabelle, I like that. When you first spoke, the first time you told me anywhere from two to three days a week, I just want to get that clear. I got hammered on that last meeting.
I know you did.
I know, but you said that when you first spoke, you said Carabelle would only stay for maybe two or three days a week.
Commissioner, you're correct.
I got it correct, I just want to get that out there. I was not out of line, I had it right because I listened to everything you said. They said I wasn't listening, I was. But you, I have, Carabelle has got to run.
Yes, sir. We agree. I gave you a response based on the information I had. I've been corrected, I stand corrected, and we will operate five and a half days. Appreciate it. Yes, sir.
Charles, thank you for being here today. And your staff and everybody with you. I want to try to address a couple of things that I've seen, but I do have some questions that we have. First off, to everybody that doesn't know, this county in conjunction with Gulf County and already, it's Gulf Franklin, we have a transportation disability service that if people are knowing that they have appointments coming up or different things to do, that service can be called and made scheduled ahead of time. It's for every resident of Franklin County and it doesn't have to just be for medical service, they can take you to the grocery store, anything you might need, you just have to discuss it ahead of time. And there's a very, through money that the county gives to that and Gulf County gives to that, is a very small fee for the service provided.
Right, sir.
I do want to, I'm sorry, I have notes all on my page, so I apologize. I like, Commissioner Masti, I'm very noticing the changes that are in this proposal. They are different, there is more to it. I'll be honest with you, I was like, well, a lot of money the first time, so I was kind of skeptical about what kind of need would be here today, but I've been trying to prepare the training for that. I do have to ask a question, though, and this is more, might be completely, I'm sure you know, there's what the people say and then there's the truth. Have they, has Ascension closed the maternity ward at Indeck County?
Yes, sir. That's temporary closing, and that happened.
So, it's temporary, okay, that's all I'm saying. Yeah, I know there was a lot after Hurricane Michael, I understand that. You know, anyway, like I said, the people say and then there's the truth. So, if it's temporary closing, that's fine. Again, all these questions are not questions, I'm trying to pin something either way. I don't want the public to misunderstand you. Yes, ma'am.
And just to point out, while the OB service is not currently at the hospital because it hasn't fully reopened, because it's a trauma hospital, it does have OB services on call twenty-four seven to meet the trauma designation. So, we still have twenty-four seven OB, we're just not delivering because not all the beds have reopened.
I understand.
Okay. We do have twenty-four seven coverage for OB trauma.
Okay, just a clarification, it's not, none of my questions are intended to try to be a I got you moment, okay? They're just questions that I've waited a long time to be asked. I do see on here, or did you hear you mentioned, some of you mentioned about the priority in the hiring process, which is some of the people in our clients were asking about today. You know, there's been discussion on the financials and added services. The only time I, I know what's on there, but I still don't think it's correct, we do have twenty-four seven ER at most. I know I've been in the building nine years before they did.
They, they correct me.
Oh, okay, well, I didn't hear that, I'm sorry, I apologize. The only other thing I would ask, so here's what I can say as one commissioner. I have always thought, since I've got to sit in this seat, which is a privilege, that a new facility in Franklin County for healthcare is the first step toward fixing or having better healthcare in the county, let me put it that way. I like to date that there was an addition of possible additional facilities. I think if the county plays their cards right, there's enough money in the one cent tax to not only supply those additional facilities, but should the demand meet it, I think we can open our clinics for additional hours even more than was proposed, should the demand be there. I don't think money would be a hindrance in what you guys are proposing, that's all I'm saying. The only thing I would ask is, again, and I, just to clarify, if you guys were basically took over healthcare in Franklin County, would that make you in-network and not out-of-network for CHP?
In the county, but out of county, capital health care plan is an HMO and the service areas define to cover Franklin County and then Gulf County.
If they go through Franklin County, then they should actually, so long as they're in-network.
Correct.
That's about all I can make up of here, I just want to ask some of these questions.
Roger, I just want to thank you and your staff for the high quality of credentials that you brought to our atmosphere, I really appreciate it, and I felt very good about feeling a, a relationship that begins to build here. I also want to reach out to the people of Franklin County and, and continue to thank you for your input. Input is so important here at County Commission, and I know that I personally value your emails, I value your phone calls, I value your hand checks and your arm squeezes to tell me some of the things that you need in, relative to healthcare in Franklin County, so I welcome that, and I just want to appreciate everybody that's here today. Oh, Roger, um, again, these are not meant to be "gotcha" questions at all, I like that expression, Commissioner. This is just some of the things that I think are very important as I think about healthcare in Franklin County. The basis of my questions will be a statement that I'd like to propose to you, and that is this. I believe that there are millions of dollars here in our healthcare market in Franklin County that migrate to higher levels of care elsewhere in your system, millions and millions of dollars of our patients, and that diagnostic procedures and the high-level procedures that go on. So, and I think of some of these dollars that you're talking about, um, that you're, you know, you're looking for five hundred thousand dollars a year for, uh, a supplement for some of the, uh, indigent care, and you're, you're talking about some of these dollars, in many ways compared to the potential of dollars that are going to migrate to tertiary care in your system or any system, it's millions and millions and millions of dollars. So given that, that, that background of my question, um, I, I envision, uh, the supportive questions I'll have now, that we, whoever we do, deal with, that we enter into a very, very specific, detailed contract, a very specific detailed contract with the provider of services, I think that is huge, and I will, um, welcome that thought there. You know, we talked about a feasibility study that, that you would enter into with our county, uh, I saw that in some of your other notes that we had in previous discussions. As a part of me in hearing some of the words here, that we really need a community health needs assessment. I see that, and I wrote this definition, systematic process for involving the community to identify and analyze community health needs, and the process provides a way for communities to prioritize health needs and to act upon unmet community needs. So I see that as a very, very important tool as, as we go through many of the, of the subjects that you have mentioned here. I also see a broad picture, and that is that when we're dealing with Franklin County here, we're looking at, let's take our outpatient healthcare facility, we have a contract with Carabelle, Florida, that says that we will have a twenty-four seven facility there in Carabelle. We already spent a couple million dollars building the building, and we think that that's very, very important for you to recognize twenty-four seven care there. The other side of it is, I don't want to, um, leave our ambulance services as, as a stepchild. To whom much is given, much is expected, and I really believe that you need to integrate and embrace our ambulance service as part of the deal, I think that's more than likely to consider that anyway, that it's called points of access, and we need portals of access in this community, and, uh, we are in medical care desert in our eastern side of our county. So I've made some statements, uh, do you have some comment before I go on?
Yeah, just one, um, one, um, there's a lot of, there are a lot of needs, assessment, assessment made on this proposal. Patty is, has a consulting firm that pulls all the data, so this is, this is driven on a needs assessment for, for the county. In addition to that, the county health department does an, a, an annual assessment that they, they listen to the community, and they make a needs assessment also, and we, we work closely with the health departments in, in our communities and make sure that we strategically look at what their needs assessment are to correlate kind of what we do, and so that has been made, and we work, and, and, and one of the biggest needs that they have is of behavior health, and, and we don't have an answer to that. The ambulants, we, we recognize that as a critical part, we, um, we, we all need that, we all need that service, um, it's not part of our proposal right now, and I'd like to take one step at a time and handle this and, and look at what, what we have there and continue to work, we, we, we've done that in Gulf County, we don't run that ambulance, but Dr. Paolo, the chief medical officer of the hospital, is also the chief medical officer of that, uh, so we, we will work closely with the AMS, and we certainly concur with you that, that it will never be a stepchild as far as our interest.
Thank you. I wanted you to consider to broaden the scope of your emergency department that you talk about here, and look at the, relative to equipment, look at the equipment of all of our facilities, and would you consider a walkthrough to determine the equipment improvement needed in all of our facilities in Franklin County relative to medical?
Oh, absolutely, I think once you, once you get the, get the doctor, we, we have a, have an endless request from our medical group on, on practices and what, what they need, and, and that benefits the, the economic sustainability of those clinics to be able to bring in those, those adjustments.
And with regard to the equipment we've talked about, we did reaffirm that you're going to bring in, you're considering bringing in shiny, brand-new equipment, not refurbished, I suppose you offer us a timeline and cost for that equipment so that we know specifically what these replacements will be and when they're going to happen, almost by day and day.
Well, the, the, the capital costs here, this equipment, and I've got the list that backs up that number, but it includes monitors in every room, including all the monitors, it, it includes your, your infrastructure, electronic medical records, uh, this also includes the CAT scan, because this is the diagnostic, as well as the, the x-ray, and fluoros, and ultrasound, and the lab equipment would all be in this column, and that would be implemented prior to licensure, you need that in the building before you can license, so it would all be there, and under new construction, the, the new state-of-the-art mammography is in this line item, under specialty care, but we can give you a list of everything that would go into these other programs. The only thing that's not completely new is the rehab services, because we have good existing equipment, but we're doubling the space, so we're buying a lot more equipment to put in there. So we have the lists, this, this was not just a budget that said X dollars per square foot, we know every piece of equipment that's budgeted within these line items to these buildings, and this assumed all new construction, uh, so it would all be in place when, when the facility's open.
And then to complement what you said, then, I would want you to consider, then, if you give us a specific timeline of when the card or box is arrival, when they're going to be opened.
You tell us when the facility is going to be built.
If you start construction, if you start construction tomorrow, we can tell you, we can come off the pipeline.
I understand, I'm just giving you.
And I understand also, Commissioner, you, you know, we're willing to work through, through a transition on, on work, we, we, this is, this is when the facility's built, you know, what, what we have discussed is, what's, what's the time running between when you make the decision to get the facility, because there's construction time, and we're willing to work with you through, through that transition.
Yeah, and I, and I'm, I'm speaking of the reality when the honeymoon is open, that's what I'm talking about, sure, if we, uh, do brick and mortar, and, and obviously those are the kinds of things, but to me, this is the reality.
We'll, we'll, we'll come in, give you a list of those facilities, and when, when you have the construction, we'll, we'll bring the equipment in, in, and, and it won't be equipment shortfall on, that will limit the opening of it.
He's telling you the honeymoon's got to start first.
Yeah, I'm sure of that, yeah. Let's talk about, um, the other factor, I, I, I hear you talking about, uh, your providership with Capital Health Plan and, and the issues that are out. Just so you know, um, as of February seventh, Sacred Heart Facilities are not currently contracted with Capital Health Plan, and that was a statement made by the utilization review officer that.
That's, that's, he ought to look at the check, said he is writing to Dr. Farr's office and to our PD, their capital health is reimbursing them daily.
Well, perhaps that's because, well, let me ask you this, is it, he is getting reimbursed, but is it specific to a contract that he has with Capital Health Plan, or that they have pre-authorized that because of an out-of-network individual circumstance?
Dr. Farr's office is, is a cap, he, he's a, he's a recognized provider by Capital Health, so is our, so is our PD.
On behalf of what there are now twelve hundred and eighty-nine Capital Health Plan members in Franklin County, and that represents ten percent of the known population, and certainly a higher percentage of the known insured population, so it's a big chunk of consideration, and we, I really need more specifics, I'd like to hear more specifics about Capital Health Plan, uh, doesn't have to happen today, because I think we probably all need to do homework, it's important to know the specifics about a solid ink-on-paper contract that you have with Capital Health Plan.
I'll forward you our contract.
Say again.
I can forward you, uh, the, the part that we can, we can give you on the contracts that we have with our services we have in Franklin County.
With Capital Health?
Right.
Yes.
You have a, you have a provider agreement with Capital Health Plan or Sacred Heart Hospital, even though you're paid for.
No, no. Commissioner, this, a clinic here.
A clinic, okay, yes, and I, I can focus on the clinic, but today we're talking about an entire healthcare network here in Franklin County. And then, um, the other side of it is, is the medical rehabilitation, I believe this is an important key here, I appreciate that you've looked over at St. James Bay, but I would want on behalf of people's security that we have medical rehabilitation beds without fail. I hear you saying they're eighty-five percent occupied, but, uh, perhaps if they get a hundred percent occupied and they have no more bed space, what are your alternatives when you have to people?
I'm sure we fill up those beds, we, we, we work for the rehab services, there's, there's currently a CON on being able to get rehab beds in, in the state, and, and, and so we'd have to go back through, uh, currently in this region, there, there are no, uh, there are no available CON beds allocated to this area. So when they become full, then, then it becomes a legislative issue on allocating more rehab beds to this area, and we certainly work with where, where they are.
Okay, I, I understand that part of it, it's just, I, I'm looking for specifics, I want beds for people that rehabilitated in this county, I think that's very important to her and to people.
There, there, there are beds in, in good part about our plan, where beds utilize the capital in, in this community and our displacement, so I think Patty's done a, a great job, or Rob and I are reaching out, finding a way that there is adequate beds to take care of the population of Franklin County.
Well, thank you again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Once again, thank you for the people who have come here today, we appreciate it.
On a part of to clear up, we had a, two or three, a little bit of leading resistance, go on. They get, it's a public record, you're becoming, so, out from, you make the lay on the ground for a couple of years, maybe a year or two.
It's a long, right? How long is it going to stay?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, don't they do the community, uh, needs assessment next year for the public?
They do. I see your question.
Yeah, but they, um, they do a, uh, community needs assessment, we do that every three years.
Three years.
We plan, every year they monitor it, it's a four-year basis, so it's not like you're moving.
I, I heard that term, Roger, Mr. Hall, Mr. Roger Hall, I heard that term "gotcha", this isn't intended to be one. And, um, yeah, probably be called the devil, it's probably been the third time for the day, so it's been one of those Mondays, but I have to ask a question, I, I want to piggyback on some of the questions that have been asked. So, I saw you guys had a million dollar plus, first year, second year, a million, here's my scenario, so five years comes down, and we're still losing, we're still losing more than a million, and all your intentions are, well, you're not going to walk away, you're not going to leave. Let's say we hit a, 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 the term I was going to use, that's not politically correct, let's say we, we reached a point where you guys need more money to stay here, the board is saying, "No, we're not going to do that," they pass, let's just say that, and you guys say, "Well, okay, without the money, we can't stay, and we, we have to leave." It happens.
You have a contract.
It, it, it happens, and, and, yeah, they're contracts, but each contract has our costs, so let, let's be realistic here with each other.
That's true.
And I'm not, again, this is not a "gotcha" moment, the more, let me say this, tell you, tell Nancy, I said, thank you for all her pages, for all the calls and talks that we've had, so, yeah. My question here is, you guys leave, depending on the age of the equipment, you leave it or you take it, whatever. My question to you is, what then, where is Franklin County then as it relates to healthcare? What, what options would we have if Sacred Heart says, "Look, we've tried, you guys have tried, this isn't working out, we're leaving"? What options do we have?
I think you have, you have all, you have all, with one, if you have the doctors here, that you, you know, you got Dr. Farr, that.
Yes.
That certainly you'll, you'll bring in Dr. Wells, and if you have all the doctors, you have all, all the, all the services. So because, because we're building this on, on the backs of having the primary care, the, the question asked is very high.
Look, yes, I, I.
But, 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 but we.
I have to ask it.
But we, but we will continue, we, we will continue to do it.
I, I know that.
But let me, let me, let me say this, though, if we, if we did, Franklin County's still much better off in the five years, and you're going to have more chance of economic sustainability if that did happen, but it's not going to.
So I'll, yeah.
Give you the "gotcha" back.
Yeah, I can, that's fine, I, I, I got no problem with that. My question is, healthcare-wise, and this is, this is actually directed to you, I, I just want people thinking, healthcare-wise, if they're not there manning the, the freestanding emergency room that we have, they have since, again, all hypothetically, they have since been able to apply for the critical access, and they have that now in St. Joe. Capital Health does not allow us, except for the emergency room, to go beyond Franklin County borders to get any other health or everything we, we have to do in those town hazards. I, I get all that. My question is, what do we have in the county for healthcare? Do we have to go out and hire another company to run the emergency room? Do we, I, I, I know they have doubts, but I'm just asking a question that I've been asked again, and again, and again, and, and I'm not, don't get me wrong, I respect everybody that comes up to that podium with an opinion, my point is, there are people that see me in the store, that see me in other social settings, that see me in other circles, that say, "Well, Michael, what about this, what if this happens, what is going to happen to Franklin County"? So that's why I'm asking the question.
And, and again, we'll, we'll have, we'll have in account the, the contract that specifies the, the services, and, and then the county has legal recourse against Ascension Sacred Heart.
In, in the contract, yeah, I, I get that, and I understand that, but. I just wanted the understanding of, of, we have to, oh, this is fine, I love this proposal, don't get me wrong, but let's think, and it's my job to tell you guys that I have, I have to think about the worst case scenario.
I have to consider. If they leave, the contract that gives our care back to us, if they leave, that's what they're supposed to do.
They cannot do that. We cannot do that, Commissioner. Unless somebody's going to tell me different. That's not how it works. That's not how it works. And again, this is not a gotcha for safety. I, I said this at the beginning, at the very, very beginning when we started looking at this, Commissioner. I said.
Well, Mike, let, let me say it this way. We'll, we'll sign the contract and get paid. We can't determine what the law brings.
Got it.
But we're, we're going to, we're going to be here.
Yes.
That's, that's not, that's, and, and if you feel for an instant that that's who we are, you don't need to sign a contract.
I agree. Let me say this. I got no problem with that. I'm, I'm not here trying to get hand claps of, of, of raise this political pressure to be favorable. That's not what I'm saying. I said to this board from the beginning and to the public, to me, it is less about who's providing the service. This board needs to consider the model going forward with healthcare. That's what I asked the board to consider. I'm going to stand right, I, yes, I, I use Dr. Farr. I have for the longest while. I love Dr. Farr. He's the best. I've been a Catholic from the cradle. I will declare that too. Except for Sunday because of the last hour, I stayed up too late. I didn't get the math. I mean, I'm being honest here. My point is I'm trying to get people to understand we have to look beyond it. Is the model of what they're proposing, the board wants to deal with for the future of this county? Because if they leave, then we have to go out and look for another. And I'm not saying that they will. They're all best intentioned. If they do, if it gets really bad and something happens, is this the model, the model of healthcare that the board wants to move forward? That's what I'm asking the commissioners to think about. Again, I love Ascension Sacred Heart. Nothing against it. I love TMA. He does, well, there's a tragedy in my family, something I lost in my family that I just love to care about. That's not what I'm saying. I'm asking the board to consider the model of healthcare going forward. Again, if they leave, we're going to be back in pain, this week and the end of.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, let's, let's look back up just to say, well, you know, I, I love all the questions. All the questions are, I understand all of it. But I'll, I'll, I'll state this. You've asked, you've asked for needs on how, how healthcare can be better in Franklin County. You put it out to everyone. I ask you, who has said they'll come in and they'll provide dollars? Who's come in and said they'll go at risk?
Yes.
Who's come and said that this is part of their mission?
Yeah.
I'm all this.
I agree. And I'm, and I'm.
They also say, I'm like, who didn't say they're coming, say they want to build a hospital? And who we do?
No one said that.
Well, y'all saying y'all wouldn't be one.
That's right. We said we wouldn't be one.
You wouldn't, you don't want a hospital. You want to work on one, but you want to.
Um, Kenny and all, and Kenny, Commissioner's all respectful. I ended my question and answer. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
One of the, I think, Michael, one of the reasons you asked that question is, Gadsen County running, is it Gadsen County that ran into that issue?
Yes.
And they, they had a company that contracted a emergency care for them and went bankrupt. Ended up sitting there with that.
With, with, working with the largest healthcare systems in the country, I don't think it's going bankrupt.
Yeah, I'm not saying, I'm just trying to qualify the question. What my.
It's not fair. Okay, then. I understand. And that to discuss among ourselves for just a moment, as we heard this at the atmosphere. Mr. Chairman, now we finish. As an example of a model, what you're all saying, it seems to me, relative to the physician staffing we've heard about today, that I would recommend a detailed staffing plan that begins with two to three full-time care physicians to cover all the facilities, looking for one to two-day specialty clinics and a detailed staffing plan. I think that's a model that gives us a picture of what might happen later.
I'm, I'm sorry. So you asked, you mean that?
No, I'm just making this statement in general, because I think Mr. Hall has finished discussing and I just wanted to make that statement. I'm just.
It's in the presentation.
Oh, it's in the presentation. Yeah.
It's in the presentation and we'll send you all a copy. And Texas A&amp;M asked us to send them a copy after you made the presentation. I wanted to make sure it was okay with you helping us to do that. Okay. We haven't seen it yet. We just told them we were presenting.
That's fine. And I'll make sure they get it.
They do like this with me, you know. I'm doing what the best in the first of kind, okay, right in the kind. And I don't do the one-sided. I don't peek side. I look in the details and figure that one out, thanks to people in the county. But if I don't, if people don't like the way I do, so be it.
Before you adjourn, I just want to thank them for coming because this, this is a lot of work. And it's done a lot of work and it's really good information. It's something for us to think about as we go forward. And maybe you'll need more information. Maybe like, like, like what Mr. Roger Hall said, you know, ask them what, what, what we need. If there's more, something that you think is lacking, that you think will make it work for you. And that's, that's my point. It wasn't gotcha. I'm not knocking Sacred Heart. My point is I want the board to look at the models and say, how do you want to move forward? Yes, this is a guide. Sacred Heart, the best at what they do, are the models. Make sure that's the model you want and then, Commissioner, we, we move forward. Do you have a quick question? One question. I'm sorry, sir. One quick question. The, the financing of the building, we, we've talked about this here and now a few times. This is the point of it. I'm against a timetable. Do you still think the USDA financing we have there is one of the best ways to seek financing for the building?
If I put on your, your head, I'd get the FDA blown tomorrow because of, you know, and use it to bail the stain. Because, you know, you're not going to get better funds and then you can put it, put it out.
And the reason I'm asking that, sir, because we're against a timetable. I want to make sure that if this works for you, this works for the board, that's something we go out and try our best to maintain. That's why I asked that question.
Mr. Hall, I want to thank you and your staff for being here today.
Thank you, sir.
Read the journal.